How's that?
We called order this meeting of the mayor and council on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have an imocation by Reverend Michael Jackson, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Let's pray. Grace and turn to God our Father, we thank you now again for tonight. God, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for our mayor and our council. And God, we most of all, we thank you for our great city. Now, God, we ask that you move in the midst of this session, God, move in the midst of this meeting, God, continue to lead, guide, and direct us. It's in Jesus' name that we do pray at all of God's children's sake. Amen.
Amen. I pray I tell you this to the land of the United States of America, to make love to which is tenets of innovation under God and the vessel with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Okay. We've got a pretty long agenda today, so we'll try to push on through it fairly quick. Can I get the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on December nineteenth? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. No employee recognitions, public hearings. We had a, we got a public hearing tonight to receive comments on a board of planning and zoning appeals, recommendation to annex and rezone property located at three seventy-eight Hood Road, and to amend the comprehensive plan character area map. So this hearing's been properly advertised, I assume?
Yes, it may have been.
Okay. Is anyone here in council chambers wanting to speak on this public hearing, the three seventy-eight Hood Road? Seeing none, I declare this hearing closed. To receive comments on a board of planning and zoning appeals, recommendation to annex and rezone property located on Stewart Road, and to amend the comprehensive plan character area map. I assume that one's been properly advertised.
Yes, it may have been.
All right. Anyone in council chambers want to speak against this? We'll go, we'll go first with against. All right. Come on up to the podium, state your name and where you live. I guess you even gotta state where you live, but just, just your name.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Culp. I live at four eighty Stewart Road, directly adjacent to this plot. I am perhaps the most affected person in this room by this proposal to put a road and potentially some houses within this fifteen acres. First, I want to say that as a capitalist, I'm a little beside myself to actually be speaking at a hearing in opposition of any type of construction or new business. In fact, I tried to purchase this land myself, spending months attempting to get in touch with the owner, only to be called on a Thursday and told to make a bid of two hundred thousand dollars within twenty-four hours to beat a competing bid. This was strange and a great motivation to be here today. But I also have some facts-based opposing reasons to share, and in case it helps give these reasons more weight, I want to briefly introduce myself. I'm an outsider. I am new to La Grange. I've lived here for just two and a half years, but I am invested in its growth and its future. I've even created local jobs. Our mayor, Mr. Arrington, built my house. One of our former mayors, Jim Thornton, was our closing attorney. I attend Clearview Chapel every Sunday. My wife is deeply involved in the art scene. She donates, exhibits, hosts events, and volunteers to teach La Grange children. We get our beef from Farrell and Mike at L.J.O. Ranch, and even my parents moved here recently, buying their retirement home just a few miles away. I've also hosted dozens of friends who have flown in from all over the world to show them what life is like in La Grange. With all this in mind, here's why my family opposes this project. First, Stewart Road is quite small. There are only two narrow lanes. There's no shoulder. People drive way too fast around the curvy roads, and it's simply not safe for hundreds of new residents that would be going in and out of this road. Second, the land in question is down a steep embankment from my pond, which often overflows after a heavy rain. I inquired about building some sort of dam to prevent this, but was told that would likely not be allowed by the city. As a result, there are several makeshift creeks with a flow that changes after every big storm. There's also a good bit of erosion. So I'm not sure how this construction could be done in a way that doesn't cause permanent damage, either to my pond, property, or the natural spring that feeds into it. Third, I simply don't see any economic evidence to build another subdivision at all. To demonstrate, this past Sunday, I drove down every street of four nearby subdivisions, and here's what I found. Bryant Lake, twelve minutes away, looks like an awesome place to live, but the entire back half hasn't had a single development in at least nine months. I know this because I helped my parents look for homes there nine months ago. There are still dozens of empty lots. Why? Second, Cross Fine Village, six minutes away on South Davis, began opening in two thousand and twenty-two. The first phase still has empty lots. There's homes under construction all along Windstream Drive. Third, Dove Creek, opened in two thousand and twenty-two on Thrash Road, seven minutes away. There are around twenty-four completed homes and another twenty empty lots on Mourning Court. Why? Fourth, Bailey's Point, just four minutes away on Towns Road. These homes date back to the early two thousands, many being built in two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, yet there are still several empty lots along Jasmine Circle and Jasmine Court. Why? So again, I say as a capitalist myself, there's insufficient demand to build this at all. The nearby subdivisions sell at a range of prices and have a range of amenities, but what they all have in common is that they sit on much nicer pieces of land than this one, which is stuck between the highway, a marshy swamp, and the parking lot of a factory whose lights don't even turn off at night. Which brings me to my last point. Most of us, I think, live here in a small town because we want to live in a small town. We want peace, quiet, and privacy. And I would appreciate if those of you here tonight in agreement with me would stand to communicate this to the council. Thank you. Let us all be a reminder to each of you that the purpose of our government is to execute the will of its people and not the will of property developers, who are the antithesis of the small town living we came here to protect. Thank you.
I got a question, please.
Yes, sir.
Help me understand, I'm familiar with Stewart Road, but help me understand exactly where do you live at on Stewart Road?
I live at four eighty.
If you come in down the, from one oh nine, and you go through the bad curve, and you start down the hill, where are you at from there?
I'm on the right once you go around the first big curve. When you see a pond on the right, I'm the next place on the right. So I'm sandwiched between this plot of fifteen acres and the one hundred and thirty acres previously owned by Gwabie.
Oh, just, just from that statement you made, repeat that for me. The will of the people and not the developers.
Right.
What you had said, repeat that for me.
Sure. Just a simple, friendly reminder that we're here, living here in a small town where we feel we can make an impact on the folks who govern us, because we are the folks who govern ourselves. And when I see property developers building a bunch of stuff nobody wants, it's a little bit painful. We have silt fences all over La Grange. Nobody's moving into these homes. Seems like a bad business decision to me. I'm not a real estate developer, but I do make deals for a living. I'm in private equity, and I buy and sell companies all the time. And if I were going into an area where the existing supply didn't have demand, it wouldn't look like a good deal to me.
Agreed with you. So you're on the forty-five acre target?
Yes, sir.
Are you here or in the city?
Yes. Okay, keep mine.
All right.
That it?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else in the room want to speak against? Come on up, state your name, please.
We go. And that's the bell. I look at.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Caraway. I live at one thirty-nine Greenbrier Trail, subdivision right off of Stewart Road. I'm also the HOA president there, and I have lived in that area since nineteen ninety-nine. So I want to echo everything that you said prior. Feel the same way. You know, a lot of concerns that I have about this proposal, main thing is infrastructure, Stewart Road, traffic and safety. You're adding three hundred homes, which means you're going to probably be adding another four, six hundred cars on Stewart Road on daily basis. Are we prepared to handle that? Are we going to widen Stewart Road? Are we going to put a stoplight where one oh nine and Stewart Road meet? You're going to build an inland port. You know, they're building inland port right across the way. That railroad crossing is going to be busier than ever. All right? So are we prepared for the, for the infrastructure, increase usage of the railroad? And my main concern is congestion on one oh nine. Between work traffic, school traffic, it's going to make it very hard to get out of there, and I think it's going to cause a safety concern. The other thing, quality of life, like you mentioned, and a lot of us like to live out that way, to get out of the hustle and bustle. I know we live in a small town, but sometimes it's nice to get back and relax and be able to hear things like birds and, you know, have, see the stars in the sky and stuff when you go to sleep at night, things like that. So having lived there for, since nineteen ninety-nine, I came back after college and bought my childhood home from my parents. My son has in my old room that I grew up in, and I sleep in the same room my parents slept in when I was growing up. Area means a lot to me. I think, you know, I won't speak for everybody in our subdivision, but our subdivision has reached out to me and is unanimous, pretty much unanimous, that majority are against this. You know, I worry about, you know, the, the, we tend to put houses anywhere here. We've built houses on Town Road, you know, underneath power lines. You know, that doesn't seem like a very, you know, good investment. You know, if I was a homeowner or somebody, I wouldn't want to live under power lines, you know? You know, like the gentleman before me stated, you know, is there a need for this? What value is this going to bring to our area? We don't have a grocery store besides Dollar General on this side of town. You know, where are, where are our residents going to go at that point to, to, to get food, to get groceries, to get needs, restaurants, things like that? The other thing that, that, that concerns me more than, more than anything, too, is also just, you know, if this is going to be city property or part of the city, who's going to handle EMS services? Who's going to handle policing? Who's going to handle firefighting? All that stuff. Are we prepared for an influx of people which could lead to increased crime rates? We just went through a series of thefts last year where people in our subdivision got their cars broken into. A lot of people did. So are we prepared to address that as well? Main thing for me is, a lot of us out that way, we, we choose to live out there for a reason. It's because we don't want to live in a super-developed area. We don't want to live around a bunch of, you know, homes that are cheaply built, that are going to put our property values down, who's going to bring the, the pricing of our homes back down, and that's something we're also worried about as well. I don't know much about who the developer is, who the builder is. I deal with new construction, so I'm kind of speaking against my own way of making money. But I do have a lot of concerns on how homes are built these days and how, you know, the pricing of these homes, how's it going to impact my house? How's it going to impact my neighbor's homes? And then the big thing for me is just, we've built a lot of things in this county, in this city, in the last five or six years, and I haven't seen a single bit of infrastructure that we've improved. You know, South Davis Road and Upper Big Springs, we're still waiting on a turn light there. And when we built two apartment complexes, haven't seen a turn light there. You know, it's, those are the little things like that. Are we going to, like I said before, not to repeat myself, but my main concern is, are we prepared for four to six hundred vehicles to be added to that road on a daily basis? Because that's what you're bringing over there. And with that said, I can't, I can't, you kind of spoke a lot of the things I felt earlier, so, but I'll echo a lot of what you said before me. So that's, that's that, and that's also how a lot of my property owners in Greenbrier feels well.
Yeah. If anybody got any questions from Mr. Caraway. Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else want to speak against the development, annexation? Come up there.
My name's Honey Momen. My dad bought property on Stewart Road and built his house in nineteen seventy-two, before Milliken was there, before the homes in Greenbrier was there. He wanted to get out of town, and he wanted to be on some property, so he has ten acres. I don't know if you got the email from my daughter, Leslie Sebo, with, she had to say, if, if not, I'll read it to you. If, if you got it, then we'll skip this. But our property in itself, which is only ten acres, I understand, but it's right across from the entrance to Greenbrier. And with the water situation, it has eroded our whole property. We're just a big wash now, where before the land was, was flat. So I know all these changes are going to make a difference. I don't know how you're going to get three hundred houses on fifteen acres. Is it going to be apartments? Or is it going to be houses? Or are you just using the fifteen acres to access the hundred and fifty-four acres that's behind it? That's what we need to know. We don't need another big subdivision out there. We moved to the county for a reason. We don't want the city in the county.
Could you do me a favor?
Sure.
The email that you sent?
Yeah.
Could you read that?
I'm ready.
You know, these proceedings are recorded, and I just want to make sure it's in the record for.
Okay. This is from my daughter, her Leslie Sebo, and she lives in my mom and dad's house. Today's meeting is about rezoning a connective piece of property of fifteen acres to thus open one hundred and fifty-four acres to developing of a neighborhood that consists of three hundred homes. Do we even have that large of a neighborhood in La Grange to even draw an environmental impact? This land has been a rural area for years, something that is rapidly becoming obsolete in our county. When the Dan and Rec Neighborhood was built in the late eighties, the traffic that came along with water runoff changed the face of the neighboring property, as well as stopped the usage of the wells in our area. The area is not for septic systems due to inadequate drainage. We have witnessed so many neighbors with failed septic tanks. This proposed development will lead to drainage directly into the Long Canyon Creek, which ultimately leads to West Point Lake, La Grange's municipal water source. Please ask for a further review of these plans. Although three hundred households sounds like a financial gain, what is the real financial hardship on the city for traffic lights to mediate the flow of traffic on Greenville Highway? The impact to the school system? Can they incorporate that many households in our area with already added burden of so many apartments in this area? And again, the wastewater from that many houses draining into Long Canyon Creek? Please focus the city back to the already city-managed area that desperately needs redevelopment. Leslie Sebo.
Yes, sir.
Get a question?
I, I do want to answer something.
I'm good. Thank you, Mark.
I did want, what, what I, what I have been told is that this fifteen acres is to have a secondary access to the hundred and fifteen, hundred and eighteen acres, which is already zoned and can already be built on.
But you got to have access to it.
Well, I understand this is for access to, yep. And I'm not sure, there's questions, I guess we can ask Mr. Costal when he comes up, but in, and I'll try to address that.
Okay. So that would handle the three hundred houses, and they're not going to be apartments on just fifteen acres.
How can you address all of them when he comes up? Yeah.
We'll try to answer your questions before you go.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah. I'm, I'm going to continue if anybody else wants to speak against, and then I'll give the opportunity to speak for the subdivision, and developer may want to speak. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
This is just, hey, Mark, so this is just for access. We ain't, I mean, they can still be back there, this is just for access.
We, we need to. We'll let that. Yeah, we'll let, okay. Professional.
All right. Anyone else want to speak against this? All right. Come on up and state your name, please.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Not very good with this, public speaking and whatnot. It's my first time appearing for a panel like this, but if you'll bear with me. Like the first gentleman, I'm not a native here. I spend most of my time in a military family all over the South. Most of my time came from Virginia until high school, and I moved down to metro Atlanta.
What's your name, please?
Oh, sorry. Blake Har.
Blake. Blake Har?
Har. H-A-R-R.
And what's the dog's name?
This is Miss Noel.
Miss Noel?
Yes, sir. I did some time in the Marine Corps. After that, I got out, came back home, and followed my father, moved down here to take a position in Hogansville. Fell in love with the area and spent about three years inside the city of Hogansville. When I decided to purchase my first house, I looked for about a year and a half. And this was right around two thousand and twenty, when houses weren't very easy to find. And I chose my location in Greenbrier because of the surrounding area. I was a little angered when I found out that the city wanted to build over here, but more so for the reason. I can understand putting in more houses. It's been a housing crisis the last few years. But the way I understand it and the way it's being presented to a lot of us, and I ID why a lot more people are upset, is the city's not looking to expand just to build houses. It's looking to expand so that it can change the rules so that twice as many houses can be built on the same spot. I don't think any of us would really have a problem with more neighbors. We all get along on that side of the highway. It's a very close knit from the HOA that Mr. Caraway runs to, I've talked, stopped and talked to other people down on Stewart. There's a new house being built. I've spoke to the owners there, just stopped him and said hi. I think a lot of us are worried that if you bring in that many people with that type of subdivision, it's going to change that entire dynamic. Not only that, but I don't understand it from a infrastructure side. Your, your police, your fire, everything's going to be coming in from one oh nine and Upper Big Springs. If there's an issue, now you're talking about maybe life and death or property. Outside of that. Forgot mine. Outside of that, it really just falls back to, we like our area. If this is going to be something that, that's going to have to come, we want to know that you guys are making the right investments and not just taking it in as far as a money grab. We want these property taxes, so let's do this and give them twice as many houses so we can pull in more money without helping us with the problems that it's going to create. I know you touched on the, not the economic, but the, I guess, terrestrial changes and whatnot. And we're on Greenbrier. We've been, that neighborhood's been there for thirty years. We still have flooding problems. I'm, I'm on the backside along the railroad track, and every time it rains heavy, there's water coming down through seven, eight houses lots to run off just to get to the railroad bit. Other folks on the other side, I went to one of the houses that was available over there, and I chose not to, because I could see the damage that the water runoff was doing. I have no idea how three hundred houses are going to be able to tackle something like that. So I just wanted to come up and voice what I feel a lot of the other residents around me are voicing as well.
Let me just clarify, the city's not asking to do this. We have somebody asking us to annex it, so it's not the city that's developing it.
Okay. Well, no, no, I know it's not the city developing it, but.
I understand. I just want to make sure everybody understood that it's not the city asking someone to come in and do this, it's, they're asking us to annex. And the hundred and something acres are already, is already in the city, so.
Right. And then that's one of the things, like, if it's already there, why not just build what we can on it? You know, the, the spacing of our neighborhood is very nice. I've only got three quarters of an acre, but it's still enough to where you're not on top of everybody. The neighborhoods that I've lived in up in Hogansville, less than a quarter of an acre, it really didn't flow very well. It wasn't great for a lot of the residents. It didn't bring in the right kind of people, that, the kind that are going to care about what their neighbors are doing and helping them. So that's.
Yeah. Any questions? They'll go. All right.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in council chambers that wants to speak against it? Come on up, state your name.
Good evening, everybody. And I'll make it quick because I didn't prepare. I only heard about this today, and it kind of bothered me when I did hear about it. We've been living here, my husband and I, moved our family here about six years ago. And we chose the, I'm sorry, my name is Tamika Caldwell, and we live at fifty-seven Stewart Road. And we chose that area because of the, the feel of it, the country-ness of it, the quietness of it. We moved from Smith Station. Alabama moved our entire family here, and it took us actually about five years to find this home. We looked at several houses, close to fifty houses, before we settled on this house. And we love the area. One thing about it is that we love the area, the quietness, the neighbors, the, the ability just to be able to go outside and not have to deal with people every day, because it's not that congested. One of the things that we don't too much careful, but we deal with, is the traffic. I live on the other end, there's a lot of traffic when the, when the meal lets out, but we deal with it because one of the joys of living in that area otherwise is the quietness. So when I heard about this, my husband sent a message to me, and he had to work late, or he would be here. We were a bit bothered that things were looking to change. Again, we're, I mean, we're, we're mid-fifties. We're not quite fifty yet, and we just want peace and quiet. And we love our area, love our neighbors. We have to deal with sometimes a theft and all that foolery, but it's minimal. I agree with many of our other neighbors. You know, we just, I know everybody's looking to make money, but, and you know, some of us just want to be left alone. We just want it to be quiet. We just want it to be the way it is. And once this changes, if this changes, it's going to change a whole lot of things. It's never just that one thing that changes. So just as the community as a whole, and to, I agree with my other people. You know, we, we think about adding the homes, adding the value, adding the money, but it never, ever stops there. Never stops there. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Is anyone else in council chambers want to speak against? All right. I'll give opportunity for developer, if he wants to speak, answer any questions that may be surfaced, that may not be truthful, or could be, or to Mr. Costal, I mean.
I owe this dollar for going, man, it's paying. If that's okay, then we can call it right or.
Yeah. I think, I think it'd be great to hear from the developer, so. Thank you.
My name, my name is Daniel Lipton. And I'm a lesbian. I don't like to speak and offend a lot of people, and I'm not here for any controversy. We're not putting apartments, so we can stop that. We're, we're going to follow by what is already zoned as, the TNR, and we're just asking to get this annexed, because we want to work with the city, and we need it for the second entrance.
Could you address, I know one question was about septic tanks. What's your plans in terms of the sewer service out there?
We are going to put in a pump station, and we already have easements to get the sewer and water over to Walmart Pump Station, and so that will not be on septic.
Is this a private pump station, or is this one that is going to be turned over to the city?
They put it into city's investigation, then the city would take it over and serve multiple.
So if he puts in, if he puts in a pump station, it stands to service the entire community? Is that correct?
It could serve whatever's in that basin. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I've got a couple of questions. It might be clear up, maybe you can clear up. So if you, if this doesn't pass, can you still put a road? Maybe this is a costal question, but can you still put the second entrance through that property you're trying to buy here, or you're trying to get rezoned and not put houses there, but you serve as your second entrance?
Or we could put a few houses.
That you wouldn't have to have it zoned.
But that would, right.
Okay.
But you have to go through the county then, right? Because it's county private.
If he owns property, he can just put a road through it.
I think I can. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll wait you tomorrow.
Hey, sir. So you hear some of the concerns, which are, what you've been saying, you have concerns about traffic and congestion.
We're, we're top of it out. We have Barge that's working on traffic study right now. They're an engineer from.
You said Barge is what called the traffic, traffic study?
Yes, sir.
Have you, have you had a chance to talk with any of these people, all these concerns or anything?
No, sir. This is the first.
Do you, do you already own both of the parcels? Both this one that's in question and the larger one?
Yes.
So without this approval, you mentioned that access point, will he still be able to?
Just a second.
Okay. Okay. That, yeah. I'll wait for Mark Coster there.
I forget. Any more questions? Get out of there. We thought to let Mr. Coster speak here to some of those points.
And then the Mr. Ray, our council members. Um, as I, as we discussed this morning during the work session, the proposal is to annex 15.7 acres, uh, located on Stewart Road. I'll call your attention to the image up here on the screen. Um, the parcel that is outlined there in the, um, I guess that's a teal color is the 15.7 acres in question, uh, that is currently owned, uh, by the developer. That parcel is not located within the city of LaGrange at this point. Now, the parcels that are shaded in, uh, that mauve or pink color are located within the city of LaGrange. And the larger parcel located between Stewart Road and Interstate 185 is approximately 118 acres. It is located in the city of LaGrange. It was annexed into the city in January of 2008. And as you can see, there is already, um, an access, or I'm sorry, an opportunity to access this property uh, to the north of a residence located at 480 Stewart Road. So at this point, uh, because this is a phased development project, or at least that's the way it's been proposed, um, they would have access directly to the, uh, to the north. And the request now is to allow for a secondary access point, uh, to the south, uh, which would provide both ingress and egress to Stewart Road. Now, the question was if the property wasn't annexed and rezoned, could the developer, uh, actually put this secondary access in? And the question, quite frankly, is yes. Uh, what the developer, while speaking with him, is attempting to do is really live under one set of zoning regulations. The parcel that is, uh, currently within the city of LaGrange at 118 acres, uh, has a zoning designation of TNR or traditional neighborhood residential. The parcel that is proposed for annexation has a zoning designation of Troop County SFMD or single family medium density. Um, quite frankly, they wouldn't get the yield that they wanted if this property was allowed to remain in the county. Uh, they may get, depending upon how the engineering works out, about half the number of homes.
And half, half the number of homes is only on the 15 acres. Cause you can still do the full amount on the other.
Health department requirements as it relates to lot size and septic tanks. One of the other concerns that, uh, was expressed tonight on multiple occasions was specifically related to traffic concerns along the Stewart Road corridor. Um, in the interest of full disclosure, the city of LaGrange has absolutely zero control over that roadway. It's been shared with the developer that he would be required to communicate and otherwise collaborate with the, uh, with troop counties, more specifically the troop county engineer, Mr. James Emery, and abide by all requirements that he establishes. Additionally, there was a comment made that, um, traffic congestion would occur at the intersection of Stewart Work Road and Granville Road and whether or not a traffic signal would be erected at that location. Well, once again, uh, the city of LaGrange has absolutely zero control of a state route, which Granville Road is being state route 109. Um, so at some point in the future, if a traffic signal was warranted, uh, then that would, um, be the responsibility of, of the Georgia Department of Transportation. Melissa, if we can go to the next slide, please. Uh, skip that one. Once again, you can see on this slide here, outlined in black is that 15.7 acres. Everything that's in that mauve color is already located within the city of LaGrange and they're both held under common ownership. If we can go to the next slide, please. Um, as we also mentioned, uh, prior to the public hearing, uh, this proposed annexation and rezoning will require amendment to our comprehensive plan character area map consistent with the character area designated with other parcels in this immediate area. The recommendation is to bring this parcel in under developing neighborhood. Um, this is the original conceptual plan that was, um, submitted to my office by the developer. As you can see, there's a proposed access point to Stewart Road that would lead to the interior of the property or more specifically 118 acres. And quite frankly, that entire 118 acres is not developable. They've had to, uh, do a significant amount of engineering on the property, uh, to mitigate some state waters that are present. Uh, so once again, if this property is not annexed and rezoned, quite frankly, they could still put the road in. They could still develop that 118 acres. And if we'll go to the final slide, this is the larger, uh, scope of the development which, um, provides an additional access point into the interior. And once again, the numbers haven't been finalized, but it's my understanding that this development project is to consist of, uh, traditional, single family detached homes and two family dwelling units. The total unit count is somewhere in the vicinity of 325 lots. So with that being said, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. One, one thing, uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, everybody's clear on too, you can find this, but the city does not charge property taxes.
We haven't charged property tax in 27 or 28 years. Yes, sir.
This is 1995. This property is in the verse's power zone, correct?
Correct.
So therefore the really, the only benefit that would be to the city would be the, the water sales. And so it should be.
And the building permits.
And the builder, which be minor, you know?
Yeah. It would be a loser for the city probably when you live off the service of its sake, you know, and things.
Another thing that I neglected to mention, uh, Mr. Mayor, you know, there was a question about how will this impact the troop county school system? Uh, quite frankly, uh, I communicate with the troop county school system or specifically select individuals with this school system on a monthly basis. We've been doing this since December of 2021. Every development project that we have, whether or not it's anticipated or it's entitled, meaning that it is likely to come to fruition is shared with them. And they have planned for each scenario, uh, that has been presented to them. I've spoken with one of their representatives as recently as this morning. He's in the process of updating his modeling to determine how each individual school system will be impacted, uh, based upon our current development trends.
The 118 acres are not developable. So how much of that is developable and how much would that cut down on the houses that could be?
Well, you'll see here the layout. And once again, I'm not letting you know, this is being handled by Barge Designs. For the north of that proposed secondary access point, that coincides within 15.7 acres that is proposed for annexation. You'll see some state waters in there that have been delineated. They'll have to put a bridge over that in order to get further to the south, closer to the, uh, the Millipin plant. So that, that corridor there would not be developable. And it's my understanding that there are other areas that they could not develop as well. I'm unable to give you a ballpark as it relates to of the 118, how many acres actually could be developed. But there's, as you can see, there's a significant portion that cannot.
So let me make sure that we're clear on this. There is absolutely zero benefit, nothing we can do as a city to stop that right there.
Councilman Mitchell, that's a fair statement. Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm counting no fewer than eight retention ponds. I think it's 10, if I'm not mistaken. 10 retention ponds. And this is an engineering question, so I really don't expect an answer. Could this development serve as a way to mitigate some of the flooding that is currently taking place in that community?
Good question, Councilman Gaskin. Um, you're right. I can't answer that question, but we do have, um, engineers on staff that we retain through Charles Abbott and Associates. Based upon the scale of this development project, the developer will be required to submit a stormwater management plan as well as a hydrology report, which our engineers will have to review and subsequently approve. Uh, but what that will do to existing conditions, once again, sorry, I can't answer that.
Okay. So, and then that leads me to my other statement. It's not a question. I too am not from here originally. I came here in 1987. Um, but when I came here, LaGrange was actually bigger than Noonan. And I think a lot of people forget that. When Noonan had its growth spurt, you see what you see. And now LaGrange is having its growth spurt. And I anticipate in my mind, LaGrange is actually going to be restored back to me bigger than Noonan was. And the only difference I think is, is that infrastructure was never put into the county, which is why you see everybody gravitating to be a part of the city. Because basically the only infrastructure you have in the county is municipal infrastructure. And the fact that we do not charge property taxes means that we fund our city off of the sale of our utilities and services we provide, which puts us in a very precarious situation so far as what stimulates growth in this community. So the question, not the question, but really the argument that I have is all that time, what did the county do to improve your situation? Cause you were paying them taxes. You weren't paying us.
All right. Let's move. One more question and then move along.
It's my understanding that second entrance is needed based on fire and EMS. What's the difference if there wasn't a second entrance?
A good question, Councilwoman Pippin. The, it's my understanding while speaking with our fire marshal, Mr. John Thomas, that uh, any subdivision that exceeds 120 lots or more is required to have a secondary point of ingress and egress. Now it has, once again, that's fire service. I don't necessarily know that that also impacts EMS services. So quite frankly, um, I previously indicated that this is proposed to be a, uh, two-phase development project. In reality, you may have everything up to and included, uh, where this proposed annexation is developed. And then the small portion, um, to the south near the, the wetlands that they've got to protect, um, not built.
So is the, just for clarification, is the 15 acres in question shown on that particular drawing?
Uh, yes, it is. It's rather hard to tell. Uh, you can see a red circle there in the middle of it.
Yes.
Just to the north of that, uh, is the 15.7 acres and that leads directly to the frontage on the Stewart Road.
Okay. So it's not colored in?
That is not, no matter.
So it would go straight, straight up essentially from the red circle?
That is correct. This is the arrow there that would seemingly indicate that the other roadway allowing the, the Stewart Road.
Mr. Coster, you just told us though, that he, he just told us he already owns it.
That would be already.
That's right. Had it zoned to build a road.
Well, that is correct, but at the same time, once again, you know, is it possible to, to go ahead and build the phase two? Um, you know, right now they're held under common ownership. He can put the road in. Um, but at the same time, you know, if he does a cost benefit analysis or looks at his performer, does it still work?
Oh, yeah. So his, his secondary entrance basically would follow the creek, the creek, the creek bed.
No, it's to the north of the creek bed.
I mean, it's to the north of the creek bed, but it's.
I'm not calling us to point it out, sir.
We keep applying that, it's crazy.
I mean, is the second entrance over here?
No, it could come up to your left. Look at that arrow right there. That arrow, that's the rest. They would help these stop to connect the Stewart roads.
They're tied up.
Which is, the creek would be to the right of it on the edge. That would be up to the rest. Creek would be to the right.
Excellent.
And there's.
One, one last thing and I'll, I'll, I'll be done. Just so for clarification, because as I talked about the, the traffic at Stewart Road and Green Road, if you remember, brought that issue up when this was first even mentioned to us.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and to make sure everybody's clear that normally DOT, GDOT does not do traffic study or they did not do infrastructure.
Impact studies.
They, they don't build new red lights until they see that it's warranted or needed. Correct. That, that's generally what we have, uh, we deal with with DOT. We can't tell them what they've got to do. We can only encourage them to.
We can make a request or make a recommendation, but yes, sir, Councilman Mitchell, that would be correct.
The state turn very slow.
I have another quick, quick question. Um, so if it were not annexed, it would fall under troop county, single family, medium density.
Correct.
Do you know the difference in the number of homes that our TNR yields versus what troop county would yield since he's already, since starting under ownership, he can put in the road, is there a difference in that number of properties?
I could give you an estimate. If all the stars aligned absolutely perfectly within our TNR zoning district, because, uh, the yield, uh, I'm sorry, the minimum lot size is 3,000 square feet, which quite frankly, no developer builds on, uh, there's typically twice that size. Um, you know, you're likely to get three and a half, uh, lots per acre. Now, within troop county SFMD, uh, you're likely to get one lot per acre, just based upon septic requirements.
I thought he was putting in a look to put on sewer septic.
But if he's not in the county, we don't actually.
So if he's in the county, so if he stays in the county, those particular homes would have to be under.
Septic, correct.
Even though they would be under city water, they can't be under city sewer.
Cause they're not in the city. Yes, ma'am.
Um, Councilman Charles got a question for the developer. As you said, you could answer this question. So maybe you know. Of the 118 acres, how much of it is developable? And we're not talking about 300 houses anymore. If you come down on acres, we're not talking about 300 houses anymore. How many houses are we talking about now?
Let me clarify that because that, that, that question wasn't asked. The way that it is designed, uh, the yield would be approximately 325 acres. That's where we've conveyed the planning commission. 325 homes, I'm sorry. Yeah. That's what we've conveyed, the planning commission based upon, uh, input that we've received from the developer and from Barge Design Solutions. Now, had they not had to mitigate, uh, these wetlands in there and the state waters, the yield would be significantly higher because they'd be able to develop out more of the property. So at this point, you can see on there, the green shaded areas of, is the green space. That, quite frankly, and, and Mr. Lipton, you can perhaps explain this in greater detail, can't be developed for a variety of reasons. So in the interest, or as a matter of clarity, somewhere around 325 is the number based upon the conceptual plan submitted currently. Um, they just can't really go any higher than that.
Okay. I got you. So is that, is that correct?
So one more question. This is for Patrick.
I got you. Yes, sir.
So we've already basically discussed that this is a, a losing situation for the city at first, I think. But does it serve to be a winning situation if we could bring sewage? And I think, and possibly city water to some of the county residents that are already out there?
They.
There is water out there. Yeah, we got city water.
But they don't have sewage.
They don't have sewer. They have to annex.
Not agree by, they're in the county.
They have to annex.
Okay. Annexing to get the sewer. Keep coming up to hell. All right. Any, anybody else wanting to speak for this development? We've heard from all the ones against it. Um, okay.
Sunday House.
Reaspiration.
I, do you have a question?
Have you a question?
No, no, come on up, come on up.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we get it all on record.
It's on, it's on, we record and then you can't hear unless you're in the microphone too.
This could be for Mr. Mark or the developer. Uh, back on the slide that showed the proposed, uh, layout. Just so we're clear, we're the 46 acre white cavity. And so we're pretty intimately aware of how the topography works there.
Slow down just a second. Let me get to the.
Yeah, sure.
Slide number five.
To your.
Numbers. Can go on. That. Yeah, please.
Sure. Now which one of you?
So we're this white cavity, kind of the, you know, there. And, uh, just below the word Stewart Road, all 46 acres.
The second entrance goes right behind this.
We're sandwiched between what would be both entrances. Um, and so I can see most of this property out of one of our windows. And, uh, we've seen the January 2023 tornado. We've seen big rains, small rains. We've seen hail. We've seen it all. And I can tell you, and I can prove it with receipts. We're constantly buying rock, putting down millings. I've bought a tractor. Uh, I have to rent skid steers pretty often. I'm constantly trying to engineer a way to not flood our pastures and the surrounding area of our home because of how water runs off from that sort of, uh, semicircle in the bottom left area.
So is this development above you or below?
This development is, would be at the top of my hill. Yeah, above me. Yeah, it encompasses. Yeah. And so I'm, again, like I kind of mentioned earlier, but I was only speaking as it pertains to the 15 acres on the right side. I'm concerned that water, uh, because nature always wins, is going to come down even harder when you build a bunch of homes, the way that you build homes, which is a little bit on a grade. And the water's going to rush down and, uh, cause a lot of damage to us. And I'm a fighter and that will not be okay with us. So, um, that's a big concern I have. I see some, uh, retention ponds from anecdotal personal experience. All those retention ponds are not where any of the water goes. Um, so I'm not sure, but I'm not, I'm also not this type of engineer.
Um, it'll have to be engineered. So all that should, you know, it should be, it should be working out with the engineering.
This was a conceptual plan.
All right. If, um, if, is there, if, I'm going to call this hearing closed. Uh, we've heard enough, I think, from both sides. All right. Well, one more. I, I totally usually don't go back and forth, but I'm, I'm going to allow it this time.
I was just going to tag along, but, uh, just, I bet engineers are amazing and going to calculate great, but it's the, during the construction, the middle of construction, we are all connected to this lens. So engineer are going to create perfect product at the end, but in the middle of constructions, what if the tornado comes? What if the, you know, hurricane comes, like the damage is going to flood our land, our property? Then who's going to pay back? Like, the damage is going to flood our land, our property, then who's going to pay back for that? And if this second entrance sounds like it's for EMS purpose, but the firefighter is going from Stewart Road, like, one direction, it's not coming from the other direction. Firefighters there soon is the other side. So, if that's the one way for coming for all those hundreds of houses, is that enough for all, like, protecting all of us? So, I'm, I'm not sure if you're aware of all those tornado damages that already happened, and are you willing to protect all the other houses during the construction as well? And also, yeah. Yeah, that's, that was just a question to, to the launch of the development.
Uh, thank you. I'm going to call this public hearing closed. I think we've heard enough from both sides. Um, we will not be voting on this tonight, uh, so there's still time to, you know, talk to these council members and the mayor and the staff. Uh, we will be two weeks, I think, when the vote takes place, so depending on the council meeting. So, our next council meeting is when we'll have our vote. Um, all right.
Additional information, email me. Just like to make them. I want to make a good decision about this, so just email me if you're concerned yourself.
For all of us. Works better.
Um, so you probably see, we're, we're going to read it, if we're going to read the first reading, uh, in just a little bit, but there will be no action taken tonight. So, if any of y'all want to, uh, leave, you're welcome to leave, knowing that there will be no action taken. But we're going to continue to move along. Um, to receive, we have a, a public hearing to receive comments on a board and planning and zoning appeals recommendation to approve a special use permit at 39 North Carrier Street. Um, assuming this has been properly advertised?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Is anyone in council chambers that wants to speak, uh, against this special use permit at 39 North Carrier Street? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Uh, we have another public hearing to receive comments on a board of planning and zoning appeals recommendation to remove certain agricultural uses from the campus heavy industrial zoning district.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the cost again, this public hearing is that right there.
Is there anyone in council chambers that wants to speak against this awful, well, beam against it down? Uh, I declare this public hearing closed. To receive, we have another public hearing to receive comments on a board of planning and zoning appeals recommendation to amend the UDO to clarify who is authorized to apply for a sign permit. This public hearing been advertised.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in council chambers wants to speak against, uh, this public hearing? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. All right, petitions and communications. Approval of a, of a special use permit at 39 North Carrier Street. So, is, I, I need to clarify this. Is, is this right for us to vote?
That's correct.
Okay. Typically, we'd have the next reading after the...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'll make the motion to approve the supplemental permit at 39 Carrier, North Carrier Street.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. All right, we got the STR UDO text amendment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed this morning during the work session, yesterday, members of our planning commission unanimously recommended to amend certain portions of our short-term rental ordinance, if it's your pleasure to do so, the action out in for this evening, is to call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, February the 11th.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we call for a special hearing for the...
Public hearing.
Stuttgart UDO text amendment.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, turn it over. City manager report.
Yes, uh, Mayor Council. Um, few items here to cover. Uh, we talked about in the work sessions this morning that we did receive a bid at $11,600 for 99 Addy Street, which was the minimum bid. If it be your pleasure, we'd entertain a motion to accept this.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept that bid.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Again, as discussed, uh, we looked at some potential conflicts for future council meetings this year, and determined that it would be in our best interest, uh, to move the December 23rd council meeting, which is the week of Christmas, to the Thursday prior, December 18th. And we'd also suggest giving the mayor the ability to cancel the November or December meetings around Thanksgiving and Christmas. We didn't have any crescent, uh, this...
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we allow for you to make the necessary changes to our scheduling to accommodate what is best for the city.
Got a motion in a second.
Hey, all the dates come up in the future. We can always change, that's right.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, these are just the ones, these are just the dates that we seen, uh, the, that December meeting was like the day before Christmas, so...
Okay.
We're just seeing them up, yeah. So, uh, any more discussion? I got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Next item, uh, items we'll cover real quickly, again, from the work session this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, consistent with our conversation earlier this morning, excuse me, we have a property owner, Jameson Carroll Smith, that asked for a portion of an alley to be abandoned at 705 Fourth Avenue. This alley serves no purpose to the city. There are no utilities within that alley. They own property on both sides of the alley. Um, it's approximately 135 feet, uh, 135 feet or 1,231 square feet. Um, consistent with other alley abandonment that we've done in the past, uh, alleys become overgrown, sometimes trash and debris, things of that nature. And again, they just like to join it with their property to take care of, maintain it.
So pleased, as your honor, I'd like to make a motion that we abandon this property.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
One more item. Um, also, as discussed this morning, uh, at the request of one of the local businesses on Smith Street, uh, we had a barge engineering look at the traffic safety on this road, and they came back and made the request that we restrict parking on the north side in order to, uh, eliminate the nine-foot lanes and make them standard 12-foot lanes, and also increase the safety in sight distance that was on that street. So, if it be your pleasure, we'd entertain a motion to do that, and we will certainly notify all the, uh, property owners and businesses on that road and the chains and the recent police agent. Take that.
Uh, entertain a motion.
I would make the motion, but those are nurses, man. They got needles.
I make the motion that we, that we adjust the parking on Smith Street as opposed this morning for the safety of all concerned to have to visit the nurse less often.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. All right, passes unanimously. Is that all your report there?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, first readings. We got annexing property located on Stewart Road.
Excellent.
An ordinance of Mayor Council of the City of LaGrange to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by the Baker Smith Family Partnership and located on Stewart Road to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
We got zoning property located on Stewart Road and amending the comprehensive planned character area map.
An ordinance of Mayor Council of the City of LaGrange to amend the code of the city to amend the zoning map in order to, as city so as to classify the use of real estate to be annexed to the city located on Stewart Road owned by Baker A. Smith Family Partnership to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Annexing property located on Hood Road.
An ordinance of Mayor Council of the City of LaGrange to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by the estate of Willie T. Edmondson and owned on Hood Road to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Zoning property located on Hood Road and amending the comprehensive planned character area map.
An ordinance of Mayor Council of the City of LaGrange to amend the code of the city to amend the zoning map and ordinance of the city so as to classify the use of real estate, uh, and extend the city located on Hood Road owned by the estate of Willie T. Edmondson to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Uh, to remove certain agricultural uses from the campus heavy industrial zoning district.
An ordinance of Mayor Council of the City of LaGrange to amend zoning ordinance of the city in order to remove certain agricultural uses as prohibited uses in the CPHI district to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
All right, to amend the UDO to clarify who may apply for a sign permit.
An ordinance of Mayor Council of the City of LaGrange to modify the UDO of the city so as to mod, so as to modify the requirements for sign permit applications to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
All right, now we got second reading of ordinances. The GMAB's elected official retirement.
An ordinance of the Mayor Council of the City of LaGrange to amend the retirement plan for the employees of the city in accordance with and subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the attached to them to the adoption agreement, to amend the plan to modify the formula for elected or appointed members of the governing authority to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same.
Aye.
All right, that's, um, did I, did I hear Councilman Childs' vote?
This is for the increase.
This is for the... This is the retirement increase. Yea or nay?
At this time, nay.
Okay, got it. Four to two. Passes four to two. All right, we got the mayor compensation.
An ordinance of Mayor Council of the City of LaGrange to amend the code of the city to amend the code system, modify compensation for the office of mayor to deal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. So, is it unanimous? Or did, did you move? I'll say something.
Yeah, you can say something.
Not that you don't, don't, don't deserve this, because I know that you do, because I know you work, or I know you do everything.
I didn't ask for it.
But just at this time, you know, with how my issue for my community is, I cannot get conscious, say yes to this right now.
Okay.
So, I'm a nay.
Okay.
I'd just like to make clarification, his comments. It's not necessarily that you're going to get it. None of this takes effect until after the election.
That's right. It's after the election, so this, we got, it'll be next January before it takes effect. All right, so what, let, let's raise hands.
It's bound to want.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right, all opposed, raise your hand. Five to one, passes. All right, election, establishing qualifying fees for 2025 municipal election.
Um, as we discussed this morning, it's required in a general election year that the council establish qualifying fees for the 2025 municipal election and publish that qualifying fee in the newspaper prior to February 1st, and, um, you heard the amounts this morning.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. All right, passes unanimously. All right, board and agency appointments. Uh, let's get this one, uh, we've got appointment of the mayor pro temp.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Dr. Gore to be mayor pro temp for 2025 year.
All right, I got a motion for Dr. Gore. Get a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? And I want to say this, we rotate it from District 1 to District 2 each year, so District 2 was mayor pro temp this past year, so it is District 1's turn this time. So, uh, with that being a, a motion and a second, can, uh...
That, this is that where you rotate, doesn't go by, how is it determined?
Once it goes back to District 2, it's just a motion.
Just a motion.
So, everybody gets a mental vote.
So, that determine, I seen your announcement like that.
You want it?
No.
I don't want it.
You put word to term about seniority.
I know.
I just want to have the term, but that's all.
Over the years, we have kind of rotated, you know, so if, so it usually only comes around about every six years that you're doing mayor pro temp.
Got you, so.
That's usually...
But again, clarification, it's rotated, but at the end of the day, it's done by a vote.
That's right. It's by, it's by vote at the end of the day. All right, so I got a motion in a second. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Dr. Gore.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, we got a construction board of adjustment and appeals appointment, a five-year term to succeed Donnie Dukes.
Who would, uh, would approve that, uh, appointment?
Reappoint Donnie Dukes.
Reappoint him.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. LaGrange Development Authority, we got a five-year term to succeed Kimball Carter.
Mr. Mayor, might make a motion, we reappoint Kimball Carter to this position.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. LaGrange Troup County Memorial Park Board, one-year term to succeed Melissa Robertson.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Congratulations, Melissa. All right, municipal court judge, one-year term to succeed Judge Baker, James Baker.
Motion we reapprove James Baker, Judge James Baker.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. All right, passes unanimously. Records committee, one-year term to succeed Tom Gore.
Make a motion, we reapprove Tom Gore.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Yep, Dr. Gore getting it all tonight. He says he's never met on that records committee, so... He says he never met on that records committee, so. Uh, solid waste management authority, one-year term to succeed Leon Childs, Darby Piffin, Tom Gore, Mark Mitchell, Nathan Gaskin, Jim Arrington, and Quay Body.
Motion to reappoint all.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. Truitt Council on Aging, three-year term to succeed Wayne Pittman.
Do we ever?
Yes, we, we spoke with Wayne today and he said he would, he would take that.
Will we reappoint Mr. Wayne Pittman?
And I will second that. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. Truitt County Parks and Recreation Commission, three-year term to succeed Anita Holly.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we reappoint Anita Holly to this, second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. Truitt County Female Board, one-year term to succeed Willie Bradfield.
Like to make a motion, we reappoint Chief Willie Bradfield to that board, second.
Motion and a second, uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. LaGrange Government, Governmental Finance Corporation, one-year term to succeed Leon Childs, Darby Piffin, Tom Gore, Mark Mitchell, Nathan Gaskin, Jim Arrington, and Quay Body.
Motion to reappoint all to this.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I've never been called to meet anybody for that board, so what exactly is that?
Hope we don't. Well, that, that was created twenty years ago as part of the structure of financing the defects building.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, um, city manager and I have been discussing possibly even, um, decommissioning that.
Got you.
But for now, we need to do it until we get that paperwork squared away.
Thanks, Jeff.
Uh, there is another question that, that follows up.
Question.
We got one more person?
Uh-huh.
Uh, real quick, does that, does that have anything to do with the new fire station that potentially may or may not be built in that area?
This, uh, this article. No, the corporation, no.
So the land is not owned by the corporation? Okay, owned by the city? Okay.
All right, yeah. Um, all right, any more discussion on, on the appointment?
It's there.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously.
Want to solve city.
All right, we got delegations, we got Ms. Sylvia Kendrick, is she still in the house with us?
She is.
Been a long meeting.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Arrington.
Good evening.
Council members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And council staff. Thank you for the opportunity that you have given me to address the council this evening. My name is Sylvia Kendrick Tucker. I'm a resident of LaGrange. I'm a mother, grandmother. I have a single mom ministry. I'm a volunteer at Branches of Hope, a casa volunteer and a substitute teacher with the Truitt County School System. Thank you for all the positive changes in our city. Thank you. However, there is a segment in our town that are experiencing difficulty in LaGrange. In, in little, in LaGrange developments. Um, excuse me, just a moment. There is a segment that are experiencing difficult in LaGrange. In the higher costs of living. The average income of social security is between one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars in twenty-twenty-four. The average house or apartment in LaGrange is around fifteen hundred or more. These prices are not in line with the average income for seniors in LaGrange. I would like to see more income-based housing. Also, I gleaned over the city plans for the next ten to twenty years concerning this I would like more information on plans during place for our community. And I'm especially concerned about the senior community. We're the ones that, we're the bedrock of LaGrange, people my age and older, sixty-plus. I don't want you to forget about us when you're doing all this beautiful development in LaGrange. Please don't forget about us. Remember us when you're making your plans. Always remember us. And I look forward to more income-based housing, not affordable housing, because some of us, we have different ideas or means about what affordable housing is. So what I'm asking for is more income-based housing and senior communities for our seniors. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you for receiving me, I was very nervous.
Look, well, thank you for, for your concerns and thank you for the things that you do for our community.
Really?
Um, you know, all the things that you volunteered for and substitute teacher.
I love it.
It goes, it goes, uh, you know, it goes a long way and we appreciate it. And I can tell you that we are, uh, council has been working on some income-based stuff. I mean, we don't, the city don't do any developing.
Right.
Uh, we do try to reach out to people and, and bring in some things that we know were needed. There's two developments with some income-based things to it. Um, I can't tell you, they're coming up in six months, two months, one month. I don't know how far out they are, but they are on the radar, they have been talked about a few times. So I can tell you that things are being worked on. I have sat down with Habitat for Humanity about some housing, and I've sat down with LaGrange Housing Authority about some housing. So we are doing some things and trying to work on some things to, to bring forth, but, um, those are the only two developments that I can tell you about right now that's, that's actually have been brought to staff.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Tucker, I just want to thank you for being patient all this time.
Oh, no.
I thought you were gonna get the lead a long time ago.
No way, no way. Very interesting, very interesting information.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for being patient. Also, thank you for coming forward about the community and the concerns and needs